Live streaming please, thank you. Well, welcome to the Hybrid AGM. Can I ask everyone to please mute their microphones at all times unless invited to speak by myself? Members should be mindful that microphones when switched on are sensitive and may broadcast other conversations being held within the vicinity. I would also ask members when it is their turn to speak, to speak into the microphone so that they can be clearly heard by those in the chamber and those listening at home. So we're on to item one and that's apologies. An apology has been received from councillor Alexander and from councillor Hawkeye, do we have any more from the floor? No, okay, no lights on. Members, I don't anticipate... Alderman Baxter, I'll bring you in.
Councillor Armstrong, I think he's online, he's at home, he's not while so.
Thank you, Alderman Baxter. Members, I don't anticipate we're going to have any declarations of interest tonight, but if we do, we will take those as we go through. That brings me then to item three. And my role in this meeting tonight is very brief. This evening marks the end of my term as Mayor of Armagh City, Bambridge and Cregavin Council and I just want to say a few words of thanks. Almost one year ago, I stepped into the role as the youngest female mayor our council has ever had and it has truly been the greatest honour of my life to represent the people of this incredible borough. I've been asked so much in the past few weeks what my highlights were and I'm so lucky there have been so many standout moments. Hosting the first ever Armagh City Pride event, supporting the first pop-up Gail Tott, signing the Mid-South West Growth Deal, the Bleary Christmas Event was something truly special that I will never forget, as was going back to my old schools in Catherine's to speak at prize giving, and of course being the first citizen the day of Sam McGuire came home to Armagh. These moments don't come around too often, so I feel truly blessed to have had that experience. I wanted my merril year to be about equality, inclusion and community and I really hope that came through in everything that I did. To my fellow councillors across the chamber, thank you for the warmth, respect and support that you've shown me. I've been genuinely moved by how you welcomed me into your communities and I don't think that we can underestimate the power of a smile or a kind word on the way into a daunting full council meeting, especially to a newbie like myself. I received that right across this chamber in my ear, you made it all so very easy, so thank you. To my Sinn Féin party colleagues, thank you for your unwavering support, your patience and for putting your faith in me, what a year that we had. And I hope I've done you proud, Gormelia Mayogh. To Deputy Lord Mayor Kyle Salvage, it's been an absolute pleasure to work alongside you. We both had busy years and I think we showed how much can be achieved when people work together with mutual respect. I know Mary and the girls would be glad to have you back a bit more and they should be so, so proud of everything that you have done, so thank you. To the chief executive and to the council staff in every department and across every depot, thank you. Your support, good humour and dedication made this year such an enjoyable one for me. Special thanks to the Lord Mayor's office, the photographers and to the staff who kept things moving behind the scenes. I truly have a newfound appreciation for all the work that you do. To my chosen charity, Women's Aid Armagh Down, I want to thank them for the life-changing work that they do. It was an honour to support them this year and today I got to hand over 16,500 pounds raised through various events and I want to thank members and staff for their generous contributions to that final amount. for their generous contributions to that final amount. I have seen firsthand the impact the charity make and I'll continue to stand with them in the fight to end violence against women and girls, something that I am extremely passionate about. To the incoming Lord Mayor and Deputy Lord Mayor, I want to wish you all the very best of luck as you take on your new roles. It is a privilege like no other to represent the people of this borough and I know that you'll bring your own strengths, values and passion to the job. Enjoy every moment because it truly does go in a blink of an eye. And finally, to my family, to my mum and dad, Eileen and Connor, without their love and support, this would have been impossible for me to undertake. And there have been many hours of unpaid childcare, laundry, ironing jobs, which I am truly, truly grateful for. And of course, to my twin daughters Emily and Lucia, they have been my sidekicks throughout this year, coming with me to almost every evening civic reception, lots of late night outs being the perfect hostesses and I want to thank them for playing a huge, huge part in my year. Finally, I would like to finish by saying thank you to all the members, all staff and to everyone who supported me and made this year honestly unforgettable, thank you. I'm going to bring in councillor Nelson, please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I want to offer congratulations to you on behalf of our party for what has been nothing short of an extraordinary year as first citizen of our borough. Your leadership has been absolutely first class, dignified, compassionate and courageous. At the very beginning of our mayoral year, Sarah made a powerful and deliberate choice to champion Women's Aid as her charity. For women across our borough who are experiencing domestic abuse, Sarah saw you. This year was for you. Every single pound she raised is there to support you, to help you find safety, strength and a way forward, so please reach out. And to those we have lost to violence against women and girls, Natalie McNally, Anita Downey, Laura Marshall and Karen Cummings, we speak your names tonight, we will keep speaking them, you're not forgotten. Sarah has also been an inspiration to mothers everywhere. For anyone who doubts that a woman can balance public service, professional responsibilities and family life, let me introduce you to councillor Sarah Duffy. A mayor, a councillor, a committed advocate and most importantly, a mother. Her daughters Lucia and Emily have been at the heart of everything she has done, always by her side, as it should be. What a role model for them and for every little girl, including my own, in this borough. I'm personally proud of Sarah for two very specific reasons. First, she was a mayor who refused to stay as silent in the face of injustice. She called out the genocide in Palestine, not just with words, but with action. She attended and spoke at rallies, organised fundraisers and stood in solidarity with those suffering under relentless brutal attacks. And in a world that often looks away, she did not. She responded to the livestreamed horror of over sixty thousand people, most of them women and children, being murdered in their homes, in their schools and in their hospitals. And when the children of our borough ask in ten years' time, who stood up, Sarah will be on the right side of history. And finally, in what will come as no surprise to many, my highlight. Thanks to Sarah, I got to share dinner with my heroes from the Armagh GAA All-Ireland winning football team. I behaved mainly and contained myself mostly and for that, I will be forever grateful. Sarah, you have done yourself proud, your girls proud and our party proud. Thank you for your leadership and for your integrity.
Thank you councillor Nelson, that's so kind. I'm going to bring in Alderman Baxter, please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and just to be, just to be brief, but just to congratulate you on your year as mayor. It is a privilege to be in such a position as the first citizen of the borough and I have to say you've done it with decorum and you've certainly been very professional in dealing with your colleagues who you wouldn't always agree with or very rarely probably agree with politically, but you've also shown, you've shown great decorum and you've always been very courteous to us. And as a woman in politics, you know, that is a role model for anyone in this country because we do know of the online abuse and all that women in politics in particular get, so you've certainly championed that on your work with the charity and Women's Aid, you raise a fantastic amount of money, so you can be very proud of that as well. So just wish you well for your time back on the benches and congratulations on your year.
Thank you, Alderman Baxter, much appreciated. I'm going to bring in councillor Larrey next.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and just behalf of my own party, I want to congratulate you on the year you've had in office. You did a great job. The amount of people who came up to me at civic reception goes, who's that person? And explained who you are and always thought of you very positively. As others pointed out, the huge amount of money that you raise for Women's Aid will go a long way in this borough for tackling those issues. And even the way you've chaired these meetings, which can at times be intense, as you know, I think is very formal and efficient. And I don't think I could speak here tonight without giving a shout out to you, Emily and Lucia, who attended numerous events with you over the last year. I'm sure they had a wonderful time and what memories I will hold from this year in office. But no, just to conclude, Lord Mayor, I think you've done a great job, you can certainly be proud of yourself and I look forward to working with you back on the benches here.
Thank you councillor Larrey, much appreciated. I'm going to bring in councillor O'Hanlon, please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and can I add my congratulations to you on your year in office? Like the female Lord Merries before you in councillor Flaherty, former councillor Amelia Campbell and indeed Alderman Tinsley, you've been a role model for young women in our society. You've demonstrated that there are no glass ceilings for the young women, for the young girls and women in this borough that cannot be shattered. But I hope you don't mind me saying that for you as a mum to two wonderful girls in Emily and Lucia, but as a single mum, you have demonstrated more than any that with hard work and a supportive family, the world is your oyster. Those girls have a superhero in their own home. I know the personal effort that you've put into raising funds for and the profile of the work of Women's Aid, I know this is deeply personal to you and I thank you for the work you've done on their behalf this year. I want to thank you for hosting all the groups and visiting all the locations I asked of you this year, from hosting the Balla McNab commoogs to the school councils from Grahammoor and Derry Neuse, to hosting the victorious teams from St Patrick's High School in Kehoe. As I predicted this night last year, that you would be the first Lord Mayor to welcome home Sam Maguire to Armagh in July. And following yesterday's defeat of the Dubs, I look to my right and suggest that I hope July is a wonderful month for all of us in Armagh who support the different orange men from Armagh. And I hope your successor is in an even more unique position to welcome home a victorious Armagh team who are on the march for a second year running. But on a serious note, I hope your successor will pick up some of the initiatives that we started, such as council formally acknowledging the World Day of Remembrance for Road Traffic Victims in November each year. This year, you and I jointly launched the initiative and I know it meant a lot to families in my community and I hope the next Lord Mayor will continue this initiative. But I hope you don't mind me saying that I'm personally glad to see you leave office. For the many events I attended with you, I was joined by one, two or three of my children. Now, I love them all dearly, but let's put it like this, I'm glad we live in kosher because I wouldn't trust one of them if you and I were on the ballot paper in Grahammoor School. Before, which is not in her place this evening, councillor Hawkeye gets too excited, this is a personal thing between you and them, they won't be switching allegiances and if it comes to runoff between me and councillor Hawkeye, I trust them all day long and daddy always wins. So, Lord Mayor, I thank you, I wish you well and I hope that Emily and Lucia get some much deserved time with their mummy in the weeks and months ahead.
Thank you councillor O'Hanlon, much appreciated. I'm going to bring in Alderman Burns, please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and yes, I want to be associated with the remarks of the great year that you had in office. Congratulations to you, you carried out a lot of functions throughout the year and I know that you were always courteous and professional in everything that you did. So on behalf of our party, I would like to congratulate you on your year. And also, it can't have been easy with a young family and having to bring them everywhere that you went and also with your work commitments, but you did a great job and we want to congratulate you for that, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Burns, really appreciate those words. Members, thank you very much for all your kind words, much appreciated and I'm now going to hand over to our chief executive, please.
Good evening, members. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, item four is to agree the appointments of positions of responsibility and the first is the appointment of Lord Mayor for the incoming year 2025-2026. And the position, as you will be aware, members, for the Lord Mayor in year three falls to the Democratic Unionist Party and I would now call on the party's nominating officer, Alderman Baxter, to provide a nomination for the position of Lord Mayor.
Nobody there to light me up, chief? Oh, ask me now. Yeah, well, look, as nominating officer, it gives me a great pleasure to nominate ABC Council's best cap secret of who the next Lord Mayor of ABC is going to be. In 2011 or possibly 2010, I got a knock on the door from the then Mayor of Craig Avon, who was encouraging me to stand for elected politics. And at that time, he told me, look, you know, you'll have a couple of meetings a month and it's really, it's really handy and I'd really encourage you to stand. So within a year, that said Mayor of Craig Avon, or within two years, that said Mayor of Craig Avon nominated me for the position of Mayor of Craig Avon at that time, when I was very green and wet behind the ears and didn't know what to expect. So it gives me a great privilege tonight to return the favour, I feel like I've come in full circle tonight and to return the favour and to nominate Alderman Stephen Mootry for the position of Mayor. Over that time, I didn't really know Stephen that well at the time, but since 2011, we've become very, very good friends. Stephen has been a political mentor and a friend to me since then. And I think when it comes to politics, there's very few people in this chamber would have a greater interest in politics as Stephen does, not only politics here locally in local government, but nationally, internationally and American politics and all sorts of politics. And any time you call down to the side door in the office when Stephen's doing his office work, he always has, you know, some sort of political programme on in the background or BBC News 24, so just very, very interested in what he does and a very proud Lurgan man, unashamedly, proud of Lurgan, where he comes from, where he grew up, where he's a very well-known businessman, Stephen's very well-known in the town of Lurgan as a family man and a businessman and very, very proud of it. And I've no doubt that this incoming year, that will certainly be to the fore and it's good to see his wife Myrtle and his daughter Grace and of course, granddaughter Imogen in the chamber tonight too, because that's something of the mark of the person, that family really does come first, but very much politics is very, very close behind as well. And we do look across the chamber, we think we have three Mootrys now, we have one beside us as well, I forgot to mention, forgot to mention Kelly's another Mootry in the chamber and of course, we had Phil previously to that. So as I said, like I feel like it's coming full circle and that's where we are tonight and as I said, it's ABC's greatest cap secret this evening, that I officially nominated, it gives me great pleasure to do it to my great friend, Alderman Stephen Mootry, thank you.
Members of council, esteemed colleagues, friends and fellow citizens. At the outset, I want to thank both the outgoing Lord Mayor and the Deputy Lord Mayor for their work across the borough over this past year. While the Lord Mayor brought a youthful energy to the role, I am also aware that the Deputy Lord Mayor, despite his maturity and years, was not found wanting when it came to attending functions. I congratulate them both and wish them a well-deserved break over the summer. I want to also congratulate Jessica Johnson on being elevated to the position of Deputy Lord Mayor, although technically not yet. At a young age, and I wish Jessica well in her role and I will do my best not to make it too burdensome for her. I want to thank my party colleagues for nominating me to the position of Lord Mayor and especially to our group leader and my good friend Alderman Baxter for his kind words. Quite honestly, I never knew he had it in him. To my fellow councillors, my fellow councillors, chief executive, deputy chief executive directors and officers at all levels, I look forward to working constructively with each of you in the best interests of the people we are here to serve. It is with immense gratitude and a deep sense of honour that I accept the position of Lord Mayor of this incredible borough, a place I've been proud to call home all of my life. As a married father of three, a lifelong resident and a local businessman, this appointment is deeply personal to me. I've built a life, a family and a business here and I know firsthand the spirit, resilience and pride that defines the people of this borough. I'm especially honoured to be the Lord Mayor to represent, the first Lord Mayor to represent the town of Lurgan. Lurgan is a special place, it is a town that has faced challenges and adversity over the year, yet it has always shown a strength of character and community spirit that inspires me deeply. To now represent it in this role is indeed special to me. For over twenty-five years, I've had the privilege of serving in public life, working alongside colleagues from all backgrounds to help shape the future of our community. In that time, I've had the honour of chairing the Economic Development Committee and more recently, the Governance Committee in this council. These roles have given me a valuable insight into the heartbeat of this borough, how we grow, how we govern, how we serve. As Lord Mayor, one of my key focuses will be to provide a voice for local businesses. In today's challenging economic climate, we must not shy away from difficult conversations or tough decisions. From a fiscally conservative perspective, I believe in responsible stewardship, ensuring that every pound spent by this council delivers real value to the rate pair. We need to create the right conditions for entrepreneurship to thrive, cutting red tape where possible and ensuring our planning department works hand in hand with economic development to deliver in a timely fashion for business, also keeping rates competitive and working close with the business community to unlock investment and opportunity. Over the coming year, I look forward to engaging with businesses of all sizes, community groups, churches, charities and voluntary organisations across the world. I want to hear your ideas, your concerns and your ambitions for our communities. The strength of this borough lies in its people, the volunteers running youth organisations in our churches, the carers, the faith leaders, the community champions. Too often, their work goes unnoticed. As Lord Mayor, I want to ensure that our community groups receive the recognition and support they so richly deserve. I want to take this opportunity to highlight the two charities that I have chosen to support during my term, the Southern Area Hospice and Epilepsy Action Northern Ireland. These organisations provide vital services and support to families across our borough and beyond. I look forward to raising funds and awareness for the incredible work they do. Sadly, there isn't a family across this borough that hasn't been impacted by cancer and more recently, I'm acutely aware of the local significance of epilepsy in families, particularly young people in my locality. I'm an unashamed unionist, but that will in no way deter me from working with others from different perspectives to deliver for this borough. I also want to acknowledge the role of my Christian faith in my life. It has shaped who I am, how I lead and the values that I hold dear. I will carry out my duties as Lord Mayor with integrity and humility and as far as my conscience dictates. Forty years ago yesterday, I married a young lady and we started out on a journey together. I can assure you, I had no ideas forty years ago, when I made my first stammering speech up the road in the Zega Hotel, that it would lead me to this position tonight. That young lady has been with me every step of the way, through rough times and good times, and she's with me tonight in the public gallery. We have been blessed to have three children and now five grandchildren and I want to thank Myrtle and them all for their unwavering support and sacrifice to allow me to carry out this role and many other roles. This is a borough rich in history, culture, enterprise and ambition. It is a privilege to represent it and I will endeavour to serve with integrity, humility and a determination to make a positive impact in my year. Thank you all. Thank you all. Call in councillor Lavery.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and just on behalf of my own party colleagues, I just want to congratulate you as you come into your term in office. Now, you mentioned you were previously Mayor of Craigavon, so that experience will put you in good stead for your year ahead, and also the work you'll be able to do for those very important charities, especially given the recent situation in Lurgan. And as you mentioned, it is good to see someone from the Lurgan DA up in the big chair. But just on behalf of herself, you know, wish you well in office and think you do a great job. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Havery. Call in councillor Keith Hockin.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. On behalf of our party group, I just want to welcome Alderman Stephen Mootrey in his new role as Lord Mayor of Armagh, Balmbridge and Craigavon Borough Council. Stephen has long been a dedicated public servant, and we know he'll bring his experience and also his passion for our communities to this role. We're looking forward to working with you over the year ahead to support local people, celebrate all that makes this borough special and tackle the challenges that we face together. It is, of course, fantastic to see a Lurgan councillor at the top table. Stephen, congratulations on your appointment, and we wish you every success in the months to come.
Thank you councillor Hockin. The next speaker is Alderman Ian Burns.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and I would just like to congratulate you on your elevation to the position of Lord Mayor of the borough. I know that in previous councils, when we were working alongside you, I know you did a good job then as the Mayor of Craigavon, and I have no doubt that you will continue to do a great job for this borough. I look forward to working along with you, and if there's anything that we can do for you, you just have to ask. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Burns. The next speaker is Alderman Paul Barry.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and could I also congratulate you on your elevation to the position of Lord Mayor? I would like to wish you all the very best for the year ahead. I was delighted to hear, as Mark has said, it was ABC's best cap secret. I was delighted to hear the name of Stephen because Stephen, I have known him for many years in the field of politics, and whilst he has said that he is a proud Lurgan man, he is also a proud ABC man, because we have seen Stephen in the chamber on many, many occasions, questioning and cross-examining the officers at the top table of issues that affect right across the ABC area. And I am glad that Stephen is in that position. He is a man who has a love for politics, love for his family, but also love for the area, and I have no doubt that he will want to see this area flourish in the year ahead. And I have no doubt in his leadership as Lord Mayor that he will continue to carry out that position with the greatest commitment and dignity that comes with that office. And congratulations on your fortieth wedding anniversary. Myrtle only looks like forty, so it obviously is working wonders for her, but I would just like to wish you all the very best, Stephen, and delighted for you and your family.
Thank you, Alderman Barry. Councillor Thomas O'Hanlon.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and can I congratulate you on your elevation to the position of Lord Mayor? As has already been said, that you held the position of Mayor of Craigavon back in 2010, and it took the good city of Armagh to elevate you further to the position of Lord Mayor. I know, like all before you, the people of Armagh will welcome you warmly. Being first citizen of our home place is a privilege and an honour. It calls on us to stretch ourselves both personally and politically. And everyone says they will be a Lord Mayor for everyone, and all your predecessors since 2015 have done so with pride, and I know you'll be no different. I wish you every success as you embark on your new role. As indicated to the outgoing Lord Mayor, this night last year, I suggested that she might be the first Lord Mayor to welcome home a victorious Armagh GE18 with Sam Maguire Cup in July, and she did so. Tonight, I express the hope again that you will be the second Lord Mayor to welcome home Kieran McGinnis and the team in July with the Sam Maguire once again. And I know you'll enjoy the opportunity to welcome home a band of merry orange men in July. I also referred to the initiative acknowledging the World Day of Remembrance for Road Traffic Victims in November each year, and this is an important event in promoting road safety, but also in supporting families that have lost loved ones on our roads. Can I wish you well? I know that you have the support of your wife and family, not just tonight, but throughout the year, and I sincerely look forward to working with you as our first citizen for the next 12 months. Thank you.
Thank you councillor O'Hanlon, and councillor Keith Radcliffe.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. It's absolutely fantastic, and a big congratulations to see you as Lord Mayor here tonight, Stephen. And I know you're going to bring a lot of your experience to the role. You've obviously mentioned there just about being a businessman, so I think it's good that you've mentioned business, because business is a big part of ABC. And your opening speech was absolutely fantastic, and it was very clear in your opening speech how much you love and think of your family, and I'm sure they are very, very proud of you taking this role here tonight. So, I would just like to wish you all the very best for the incoming year, and congratulate you in your new role. Thank you.
Thank you, Keith. At this point, I'm going to bring in the chief executive.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and on behalf of the officer team, can we offer our congratulations to you on your appointment as well, and we look forward to working with you over the next 12 months? Members, item 4.2 on the agenda is the appointment of the Deputy Lord Mayor for the incoming year. But before we get to the appointment of the new deputy, I think it's only fitting that the outgoing Deputy Lord Mayor has an opportunity to say a few words, so councillor Savage.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you, Chief Executive. First off, I'd like to thank my family for all the support they have been to me over this last year, my wife, Mary, and my daughters, Joanne, Felicity and Isabella, and indeed my mum as well, who has served in the role in Craigavon Borough Council in her time as well. And I was always taught, growing up, that politics is about people, and I certainly hope that I have carried that out this year. To my party, I want to thank them for all the support they have given me and the opportunity to serve again as Deputy Lord Mayor of this great council, or as I have called it in this last year, the premier council of Northern Ireland. So, I thank you wholeheartedly for that. The outgoing Lord Mayor, I thank you for all your support over this last year and the professional way in which you have carried out your duties, and it's very much appreciated. So it is. I want to thank also our chief executive, deputy chief directors and staff from right across this council. We have so much good experience and wealth of knowledge within our team here within council, and being able to work with them over this last year within those various departments, and no surprise that food heartland, obviously, which is close to my own heart, and the rural businesses, which I had the pleasure of launching Rural Business ABC this last week there. And again, I thank all the team for their help and support on that. I said last year that, excuse me, that my faith and my culture would carry me through, would be a strength to me, and it certainly has been. And I also said that I'd like to spend my time in helping to build confidence and capacity and to empower our community. This last year, I certainly have seen, I always knew we had a fantastic community voluntary sector, and I have seen that firsthand from React in Armagh, the warm welcome in which I received there, and warm welcome that I have received in many, many places right across the Langford and Bradfordous council area, and the good work that groups like that do to help and support people in a difficult situation. And I congratulate them publicly for that and the wealth and, again, the knowledge that they have. And even to the Balmbridge and Portidown music festivals and all of that, where thousands of young people from a very young age are stuck in the stage and showing their stuff of what they can do, and it is fantastic. And again, those organisers go weeks in and weeks out, giving their time freely, and I thank them for that. And even in the Gold Line and Portidown, Maxine Chambers, the work that she does is fantastic. And I also had the pleasure being invited to, back to my roots in the rugby scene, and was invited to each and every club throughout the council area here, and I was able to attend to most of them on that. That, again, the warm welcome, and those friendships that have been built up for years were reignited, and again, I hope that they will stay there in the future. And like, there's one that does stick out with me, and very remiss of me if it didn't, and that was Portidown Ladies Hockey, and the welcome that they gave me last year, and then inviting me back again to welcome two universities from America over this last few weeks, and bringing those in to our council area, and again, ambassadors, not just for their own club, but right for the whole of our council area. I did have many events, highlights would have been the two royal visits, the Duchess of Gloucester last year in Portidown, and again, His Majesty and Her Majesty into Balmbridge in March past there, and indeed, that was a great honour for me to welcome them on your behalf here into, again, the premier council of Northern Ireland. And another event we'd done was the marking, the 50th anniversary of the Greenfinches, and again, a very important moment for myself, as my dad would have served with many of those on that. And the VE Day celebrations, and the turnouts that we had right across at community events, again, people giving up their time to show that recognition of the service and sacrifice that was made by so many, that we can live in the free world that we live in now, you know, and that's definitely... To my hometown of Dromore, I had the pleasure of the launch of the place plan in Dromore. And again, council staff, Lisa and Jenny McKevan, they've done a fantastic, and along with Lynne Gillespie, done a fantastic job with Joe Machen there, and we were able to promote Dromore, and as we try and do as many times as possible, so it is. But I want to also thank the, we had a reception earlier on in the year for one of the Masons' branches, and after that reception, they'd done a bit of a whip round, and they lifted a thousand pound for the Down syndrome, and they were able to present that there last week, or the week before. Another one, which I've heard a lot of talk about the men in the orange from the team of Armagh, that were very successful last year, and congratulations to them. But I also had the team from the orange in, and celebrating their 100th anniversary of the Junior Grand Lodge, and indeed, that was a fantastic moment for me as well. And we have a fantastic culture, and as I said, my faith, my culture would be my strength, and it certainly has been. And another young man that done so much for charity there this year was Ewan McNeil, the accordion bands, they'd done a 24-hour marathon, and thank goodness I didn't have to sit for the 24 hours, but I was able to visit them throughout that 24 hours. And again, that money going to mental health charities and that, and again, fantastic work showcasing what our culture can do for everyone, and that's what's important. One that is very close to my heart for many wrong reasons, and that is working alongside a new campaign that has started, and I will be working closely with them in the weeks ahead here, and that is nip it in the bud of working alongside Macmillan Cancer. And the startling figure within that, rural dwellers are 5% less likely to survive a cancer diagnosis than their urban counterpart, and that indeed is something that we have to address, and that's what I will work with going forward. I, looking forward to getting back into the back benches again, it has been an extremely busy year, and I will continue to be a strong voice for the rural community of our farming sector, of everything that's come through at the moment, and I will continue that work. And I can work from the back benches effectively, like our outgoing Lord Mayor as well. But look, one and all, I want to thank you for all the support each and every one of you have given me over this last year, and I thank you for that. It has been an honour, it has been a privilege to serve this council, and to see the potential that we have within this council, and as it says behind me, together we progress, and that's the way we need to go. In closing, Lord Mayor, I wish you every success in your year ahead, and I hope you enjoy it as much as I have enjoyed my role. And to incoming Deputy Mayor councillor Johnson, I wish you every success in the year ahead, and thank you, one and all. Thank you.
Thank you, Kail, for that, and now I'm going to call in Alderman Mark Baxter.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and just to congratulate the outgoing Deputy Mayor, Kail Savage, on his year in office. I just have a few scribbles in front of me here, as I do whenever I'm about to speak, and I just wrote down a couple of words, because I had nothing really prepared, and the words that I wrote down in this order were family, community and unionism. And I think of councillor Savage, that's what I think of, he's a community man first and foremost, and I knew Kail before he was in elected politics, and of course, I knew his father well before him. And Kail, or councillor Savage, outgoing Deputy Lord Mayor, always puts his community first, and he talks about all those volunteers and all those volunteer hours right across, and he's seen that when he's been in his role as Deputy Mayor, but councillor Savage himself is one of those volunteers, and he was one of those volunteers before he was in elected politics. And at any community event, surely that you're involved with, in and around Lagan River, you're sure to see councillor Savage there and involved with it. So, community comes first, and he appreciates and always fights for the rural dweller and trying to get whatever's needed for those community things, and always fighting for them. So, I don't think anybody can certainly take that away from him. So, just for this year, just to wish him well, he's back to the bench, he's been very, very extremely, extremely busy as Deputy Lord Mayor. I wouldn't say I'm sick of seeing you in the paper, but I'm certainly, I'm certainly glad it's not an election year anyway, but that'll come, and it is good that we're able to have that relationship as well, because at the end of the day, you know, we're all here, we're all here in this for the good of the community and to try and make the place a better place that we live in, certainly. Kail plays his part in that, so just wish you well as you go back to the back benches, and your wife Mary and your three girls as well. Thank you.
Okay, and our next speaker is councillor Peter Lavery.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and just on behalf of my own alliance colleagues, I would just like to thank and congratulate councillor Savage on his outgoing years, Deputy Mayor, certainly been a busy one. I know he was previously Deputy Mayor, but during the Covid times, but this year, he would have got to see the fulsome community aspects of the borough, and all that goes along with it as Deputy Lord Mayor. I think he did a very positive job in engaging with all sides of the community, and just want to thank your family as well, because I know it would have been a burden this last 12 months, so again, welcome back to the back benches, wish you well. Thanks.
The next speaker is councillor Kevin Savage.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. I would like to offer my congratulations on that of my party to councillor Kail Savage for the year he had in office. I'd worked with him a few years ago when he performed the role as well, and I know just how passionate and professionally he was in that role. He's been an advocate for the rural dweller and the agricultural community throughout his time in council, and he continued that in this past year. But most of all, at the receptions that I attended with him, he was good crack, he made everybody welcome, you know, it was a... You know, it was a bit of banter, everybody had a smile, had a good night, and that was down to his personality and his character. And, you know, it did make a big difference when you had receptions and it's a bit of cracks. So Kyle, thank you very much for your year. Thanks, Lord Mayor.
Okay. I want to bring in Alderman Ian Burns.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and I would like to offer my congratulations on that of my party to councillor Kyle Savage. As councillor Lavry alluded to there a minute ago, Kyle had the opportunity to be Deputy Lord Mayor before, but that was curtailed because of COVID. And even during COVID, he and the Lord Mayor at the time, councillor Kevin Savage, did try to promote the borough as best they could in very difficult circumstances. But Kyle has had a fantastic year as Deputy Lord Mayor. And in fact, I think in all my 29 years on council, it is probably the first time that maybe the Deputy Lord Mayor had more outings than the Lord Mayor as it goes. He maybe piped her to the post. He did a great job throughout the borough, and he was very welcoming, it didn't matter where he went. It was great to see him getting the opportunity to welcome the King to the borough and also all the VE celebrations that there were. I was very disappointed in Bambridge, but that he didn't take up the opportunity to sing some of the war songs when he was there. But apart from that, we'll let him off with it. But Kyle, we are very proud of the, the role that he carried out this year. Very proud for you and your family. And as somebody said earlier on, I knew your father, worked along with your father when he was Mayor of Craigavon, and you did an excellent job in the job that you were doing. You, you proved yourself and you were very good for the party and you were very good for your family and the community. You championed rural, the rural community and the agri-food industry, and for that we want to thank you. Thank you very much.
The next speaker is councillor Thomas O'Hanlon.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And can I add my voice of thanks to Kyle, our outgoing Deputy Lord Mayor? Lord Mayor referred, sorry, the previous Lord Mayor referred earlier to that his wife and daughters will be delighted to have him back. And I thought he was going to read out his diary there for all the events he attended during the year, so maybe she mightn't be, maybe she'd be glad to send him back out again. I don't think there's any, I think Kyle has been a real strong voice for rural communities throughout the year, as he has been during his, his time on, on council. Although I didn't know he was from Dromore, he never mentioned it before. But look, I know, and Alderman Baxter said that he was glad it wasn't an election year. I'm sure he is, because I think there's been every orange lodge across, the entire borough has been through the doors of the palace, and I would suggest that, look, it's great to see that there's plenty of orange in Armagh, and we referred to something else earlier. But look, Kyle, thank you for your, your time in, in office. And can I take the opportunity also to wish councillor Johnson every success. I know she hasn't been nominated yet, but everybody's mentioned her, her name, so unless councillor Lavry pulls a fly one, I, I, I wish you every success, councillor Johnson, in the year ahead. Thank you.
Okay. And the next speaker is councillor Keith Radcliffe.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And I'd just like to take the opportunity to congratulate Kyle on his year as Deputy Lord Mayor. As it's always already been said just about COVID, whenever Kyle last had the post, it's really, he's really stepped up to the mark because of the amount of receptions and engagement that he's had has been absolutely unbelievable. Huge, huge effort, Kyle. And I'd like to personally thank you for the receptions that I requested. As has already been said, you're an absolutely fantastic host at them, you made everybody feel at ease. I'd like to thank you for the amount of work that you've done throughout the year. You really have been a fantastic advocate for ABC Council, also Unionist Party, and first and foremost for your family. I'm sure they're extremely proud of the work that you've done, and I'm sure they'll be glad to get you back a wee bit more round home now that you're finished. But I just wish you all the best for the rest of the, the year ahead, back behind the benches here. Thank you.
And the last speaker is Alderman Glenbar.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. Can I take this opportunity to congratulate yourself? I know councillor O'Hanlon keeps talking about the Orange Men of Armagh, but don't forget about the Orange Men of County Down. Can I take this opportunity to congratulate my friend and colleague councillor Kyle Savage on his fantastic year? It has certainly been a busy year, and I know, I think we all know by the length of his speech there, I actually thought he was going to go for a 24 hour sponsored speech there. But just, just to say, thank you to my friend and colleague, you've done your family and you've done us proud, and welcome back to the benches. Thank you.
Okay. At this point, I'm going to call on the Chief Executive.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And members, we now move to the next item on the agenda, which is the nomination for filling the position of Deputy Lord Mayor. And for the incoming year, that falls to the Alliance Party. And I would now invite councillor Lavry as the nominating officer for the party to make the nomination for the incoming year, councillor Lavry.
Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And at the outset, I want to congratulate Alderman Mootra on a position of Lord Mayor, and I look forward to working with you throughout the coming year, as well as all the officers up the top table here and behind the scenes. To the outgoing Lord Mayor and Deputy Lord Mayor, thank you for your hard work, dedication and leadership throughout the past year, and I'm glad to see that Lagan River is once again represented in the position of Deputy Lord Mayor. I didn't think that three years ago when I was co-opted and two years ago when I was elected, that I would be the one sitting in this position as the first Alliance Party Deputy Lord Mayor in the ABC. So it's an incredible honour and privilege to be in this position. Thank you to my party colleagues for trusting me of this role, and to the people of Lagan River who elected me. I am very proud to represent the area I grew up in and still live. To get the last of the thank yous out of the way, I'll have to thank the people closest to me who are my biggest support, my mum and dad, my brother Timothy and my partner Harry. In the year ahead, I want to focus my efforts on the issues that matter most to the people of this council area. We have so much to offer already, but we are all ambitious to continually improve the lives of everyone who resides here. For me, I want to be the voice of equality, progressiveness and inclusiveness. And as a young woman in politics, I am passionate about ensuring young people have their voice heard and are involved in the decision-making process, especially our own ABC youth force. Access to leisure facilities, sports provision and daily exercise are hobby hordes of mine, so I want to promote the fantastic facilities we have in this area and the benefits of sport and exercise for both physical and mental health. And lastly, my focus will also be in promoting the vital work of cancer charities in our borough and across Northern Ireland. Like so many families across our council area, my immediate family has been directly impacted by cancer in recent months. I'd like to repay the efforts of those charities for all the work they do by fundraising for them throughout this year, and I'm also very keen to champion the work of our own Macmillan Move More programme and the support it provides for many people living with cancer. To conclude, Lord Mayor, I'm very much looking forward to getting started, and I hope I can do this role justice as so many have done before me. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Deputy Lord Mayor. I'm going to bring in the Chief Executive at this point again. Sorry. Apologies. I'm going to bring in Alderman Mark Baxter.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and I'm sure you're relieved. Councillor Johnson, councillor Lavry didn't play a false one in the end. So there you are. Look, just to wish you, congratulate you first and foremost on your elevation to the position of Deputy Lord Mayor. And I think it is heartening for, for people to see, because on the set up whenever the Lord Mayor stepped down as well, it's good to see young women in politics because of, like we all know about all the abuse and all the online stuff that goes on. No matter what party you're in, I think for the sake of democracy, it's always good to see that, and I know you will champion that throughout your year in office. So just to congratulate you really and wish you well, and I hope you can put your own stamp on it. Everybody does, it's sitting up at that top, they always put their own stamp on it, always comes away. It gives you a great insight actually into all the workings of all the council and all the departments, and you get to meet so many officers in so many departments that you don't normally get in this position when you're sort of sitting here three or four times a month. So use the experience wisely, and I'm sure that it'll make you, you know, it'll give you so much experience coming back to your role whenever you're finished as a councillor, back in the benches. So just to wish you well and congratulate you on behalf of our party. Thank you.
The next speaker is councillor Peter Lavry.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. On behalf of the Alliance Party councillors of Armagh, Bambridge and Crokegawen Borough Council, past and present, I'd like to congratulate councillor Johnson on his election as first ever Alliance Deputy Lord Mayor of the borough. Jessica's compassionate approach to people, her kindness of character and her hard work ethic withstand the borough in good stead in her time in office. As a strong, young, progressive woman, councillor Johnson epitomises a form of inclusive politics that we need more of in all in Ireland. Jessica is an asset to our Alliance Party, and we're very proud of her and her family should be very proud of her achievements. I have no doubt she will serve as a wonderful deputy mayor for all. Thank you.
Councillor Mayor, you're died.
Thank you, Chair. We as a party are delighted to see another young female take her role on as Deputy Mayor. I have no doubt you'll be another role model for all the young girls and women out there. From our party, we wish you all the best and look forward to the year, to see what the year ahead has in store for you. Well done.
Alderman Paul Barry.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And could I congratulate the Deputy Lord Mayor, Jessica, for her appointment as Deputy Lord Mayor? It has been a pleasure over this past couple of years to have worked with Jessica in several of the committees, and I know that, that she's a girl of great ability, but I think it was a previous speaker who had mentioned about kindness, and I know within a council chamber and in politics, there are many people out there and there's a perception that when we get into committees all day, every day, that we're literally killing each other and shouting at each other. But when we get into business in committees, there's, there's quite a bit of work takes place, and there's, there's good business-like meetings that we have, and Jessica has always been a real asset to those committees, and I have always found her to be very kind, considerate and a pleasant person to work with. And I have no doubt you'll fulfil your role to the very best of your ability. So I'm delighted to congratulate you tonight, and I'm also confident that we have good leadership going forward in the name of the Lord Mayor and Deputy Lord Mayor, a good team, and I believe yous will work well together for the good of everyone. Thank you.
The next speaker is councillor Thomas O'Hanlon.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Jessica, Deputy Lord Mayor, I've intimated it already, but congratulations on your elevation to the post of Deputy Lord Mayor. Like councillor Barry, we've had the, the pleasure of working with you over the last number of years, but it's in, in the year ahead where you get a chance to get out and see beyond Lagan River. We'll get you to the good city of Armagh and let you, and maybe even up to Kilkenny. But look, I wish you, your family and your partner all the very best in the year ahead. Enjoy it, it goes very, very quick. And I'm sorry, but as I referred to earlier, councillor Savage has left, there's not a lodge where you can invite him because he, he's had them all in. Thank you.
And councillor Kyle Savage.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And indeed, Deputy Lord Mayor, on behalf of the Ulster Unionist Party, I congratulate you in reaching the high office of Deputy Lord Mayor. And the year will slip in very quickly, believe it or not, and it does give you a wonderful opportunity to get out and about round everywhere. But if I was to give advice, which I don't do very often, but it is to rely heavily on Susan and April in the Lord Mayor's office, because they are a rock, and they certainly were a rock for me and give me a lot of advice and support throughout, even if it is lifting a cup of coffee out of your hand, telling you, you should have been somewhere 10 minutes ago. But they are, they're, they're sound, they're a great sounding board and great advice and great experience there within that office, and indeed, the whole team, you know, the catering team and the night duty staff and all as well. So I wish you well on behalf of the Ulster Unionist Party for the year ahead, you and your family. Thank you.
And lastly, councillor Keith Radcliffe.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Deputy Lord Mayor, just like to congratulate you, Jessica, in your new role as Deputy Lord Mayor. You're going to be in for a busy year, so you are, but I know you'll do very, very well. And as Alderman Barry's already said, I'm sure yourself and the new Lord Mayor will do a fantastic job going forward to represent everybody in ABC. So a huge congratulations and have an enjoyable year. Thank you.
At this point, I want to call on the Chief Executive.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And Deputy Lord Mayor, on behalf of the officers, can we offer our congratulations to you and wish you well in the year ahead? Members, moving through the agenda, the next item on the agenda is the appointment of the other positions of responsibilities, otherwise the chairs and vice chairs. Members, if you're in agreement and happy to adopt the schedule that has been set out in Appendix One, are you all agreed?
Very agree.
Thank you very much. Lord Mayor, if you're happy, I'll move on then to Agenda Item Five, Appointment to Committees. And again, members, you have the schedule before you, and again, if you're happy to agree that schedule.
I agree.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Agenda Item Six, Lord Mayor, I have no items of correspondence. And Agenda Item Seven, I have no other relevant business that would be notified of if you're happy enough, Lord Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Chief Executive. That concludes our business for tonight. Thank you for your cooperation.